Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Monday, April 8th, 2024 Alexander County Board of Commissioners's regular monthly meeting to order. At this time, I will recognize Commissioner Larry Yoder for our invocation and then Commissioner Kent Herman for our place of allegiance. If you please join us.
Please rise. Our kind and most gracious heavenly Father, we appreciate the opportunity that we have that we can come together in meetings like this and conduct the county business. We appreciate our law enforcement, those people who respond and take care of us in emergency situations. Be with our leaders, both across the nation, across the world, both on the state and local level. Be with them as they would make decisions that would bring peace and prosperity throughout the land. Be with those who are sick and afflicted and be with us as we go home tonight. We ask all these things in thy name. Amen.
Amen.
Pageant, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Be seated. Next item on the agenda is commissioners' reports. Gentlemen, does anyone have anything they would like to report?
The only thing I can report is this week, last week, I can't remember what day it was, we presented to Ms. Mail at the library her plaque, her key to the county in appreciation of her years of service. She's going to go on, she's going on missionary trip and she's going to be leaving. And then Historic Committee made a trip with the town of Taylorsville and some of us made a trip over to Newton to see the things that they're doing to improve their downtown, the things that can be done to improve and make things a little better. And we still continue to look at those things to see what the best process would be.
Very good. One thing, just one housekeeping note, Commissioner Ronnie Reese is not with us this evening. He is, he had to go out of town. Anything else? Gentlemen, next item, I would ask for a motion to adopt the agenda with one addition to the consent agenda as item number, as item L, as in Larry. And the item being added to the consent agenda is the Alexander County Heavy Rescue Contract with Vashtai Fire and Rescue. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the agenda as presented with inclusion of item L in the consent agenda.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously. Item six, public comment period. Madam Clerk, did anyone sign up for public comment? That one's easy. Moving right along, item number seven, public hearing rezoning case 24-01 Lyndon's. I will recognize Brian Burgess, Director of Planning and Development.
Gentlemen, Chairman, make a motion to open this public hearing as it pertains to rezoning case 24-01.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to open the public hearing pertaining to rezoning case 24-01. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. We are now in, we are now in open public hearing. Mr. Burgess?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. So this property is currently zoned neighborhood business. If you're not familiar, this is Lyndon's River View Sports on 16 South. There was some miscommunication regarding what signs were allowed. The owner of Lyndon's is hoping to put up an electronic message board sign. Neighborhood business does not allow for those signs. Highway commercial does. And so the petition before you tonight is to rezone this parcel from neighborhood business to highway commercial. They are both business districts. Highway commercial is the more intense of the two, which is why those signs are allowed. The planning board last month voted to send forth a favorable recommendation regarding plan consistency, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, turn it over to public comment.
Mr. Burgess, just for informational purposes, as we look at, as we look at the GIS map showing behind us, we do currently have, now I'm kind of assuming that we are, west would be up.
Correct, yeah.
Because, yeah, if you want to look at it from the door.
Yeah.
No, okay. So there is currently some highway commercial to the south with, you know, obviously a break that would be, I assume RA.
RA 20.
20, which is residential agricultural.
Correct.
I know with, with rezoning cases, one of the things that's considered by the planning board as well as, I mean, as well as our board is the, well, I'll say we're going to, you know, we're going to look at our new comprehensive plan in just a moment. But our existing comprehensive plan, what is the, you know, what is the anticipated design, you know, which is not really, but what is the anticipated design?
It's commercial.
That portion of?
Yep. So that, that strip of 16 is designated as commercial. Unfortunately, the, the existing comprehensive plan doesn't designate between varying levels of commercial. It's just commercial. That's all it says. But it is slated for commercial.
How far would you estimate it is to the north before you run into commercial? And I'm just thinking.
Going, sort of going up, up the road in my head, I'd say anywhere between from mile to mile and a half to where the old Wittenburg School is. There's Dollar General there as well as a convenience store.
Right. I would say it'd be back, I mean, it'd be back on the left-hand side, I would assume, at the, well, there's Hears Lane and there's, I mean, yeah, convenience store.
Yeah.
And there's one little, one little factory kind of place right there, I think.
There's a factory.
Yeah, there's a little factory.
Talking about the intersection of Osborn 16, where the DK was?
No.
Oh, okay. We're thinking some different.
No.
Precision materials.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Precision materials, okay.
Yeah.
And that's right before you get to Connors.
Yeah, yep.
Thank you. For those of you that are from here. Yeah. This being a public hearing, obviously, anyone in attendance is, is welcome to speak. Obviously, we ask that be done in an orderly manner. But not only those of us behind, behind this table can be involved in this, so.
Who goes first?
Just talking about the highway commercial, I happened to look up the businesses from the bridge all the way to where we're at now, and there's 26 businesses and only two of them are not zoned as highway commercial, myself being one of them. All I'd like to do is just put a new updated sign in. It's very similar to the same thing that churches and fire departments and EMS uses. It's also controlled by 100 choices of dimmability. It auto dims at night, so that's not a problem. You can even cut it off at night. Just trying to be more up to date. Been there for 29 years and used a letter sign, just like to go to something a little more sophisticated per se. And that's all I'm looking to do, is just change my zoning so I can use that sign. Any questions?
Can we get your name?
I'm Shannon Lyndon.
What's that?
Shannon Lyndon.
Okay.
The same sign company's done probably over 25 signs in this area for churches and other businesses. And if you look at the LED part, it's like three foot by seven foot. The rest of it, I've done poles on it so it'd be visitable, see, and under it if you're pulling in or out of the parking lot versus being on the ground like a lot of applications are.
Mr. Lyndon?
Thank you.
I'm good. If you've got any other questions, then let me know. Anyone else like to speak? Did I miss this last time? When you, when you get to the podium, would you please state your name?
Yes. I am Brenda Price, and I live at 6819 on that map up there, just three partials down from the bait shop or sporting goods store. I'd like to give you just a little bit of history as far as this property, all of this property or the majority of this property is about. My grandparents and great-grandparents used to own the biggest majority of that land. In 1990, after my grandparents died, the property that is now Lyndon's, my mother owned. And after my dad died, she needed to sell her property because she couldn't live on his social security check. So she sold it to George Bowman in 1995. And the other three properties just below that, south of that, were vacant and belonged to my cousins and my uncles. One property belongs to my 97-year-old uncle right now, Robert Boston. One property belongs to Janice and Wayne, Janice Shook and Wayne Boston, cousins of mine. And the property that I now own did belong to one of my uncles and then my brother and now to me. And in 2001, when the county-wide zoning was adopted, because the sporting goods store was there that Mr. Bowman owned, they, the county automatically just rezoned all three properties or four properties into neighborhood business. And I'm sure you guys know, but I'd like to read this. This is the zoning ordinance for section 154-160. The neighborhood district is primarily intended to accommodate very low-intensity office, retail, and personal services uses close to or within residential areas. The district is established to provide convenient locations for businesses which serve the everyday household needs of nearby residents without disrupting the character of the neighborhood. The majority of the land that adjoins is across the road and beside of is all residential, and we want to keep it that way. I have provided you guys with a petition of just about every resident in that area. Some people live on the, that have signed the petition, live on the River Shoals Road that's just below partial 15. Several of them have actually been hit from the rear, making a left-hand turn into their, into that road to get to their homes. My sister has been hit in the rear and totaled her vehicle in front of, right in my driveway. The traffic is horrible and people are distracted. And this sign will only provide additional distractions for the people that are coming up and down that road. New neighbors just pulled, that just bought Conrad and Jaleen's house you mentioned just a little bit ago, their mailbox has just been taken out in the last two weeks. And it's, it's not safe to go in and out of driveways there. I purchased this land in 2010 and when I wanted to build my house. And I found out only then that it was rezoned or had been zoned as community business. I couldn't build a house. So in 2010, I had to petition you guys, may not have been you, but the commissioners, to get it switched so I could actually build a house. I couldn't build my house there because of the way it was zoned. In 2011, the three properties, mine and the two adjoining just south of the bait shop, the sports shop, were all rezoned as residential. And in 2017, in March, Lyndon's brought, bought the property from Mr. Bowman. And that's where we are today. And in the petition, I'm sure I left this with Ms. Starnes last week, and I hope you guys have had a chance to read it and to study what we have put down. But there's 100, I got the zoning changes, the differences between highway business, highway commercial, and community business. I got a copy of it from Mr. Burgess. There's 163 different things that he could add to his business. I won't say that he plans to do that, but there's 163 different things that could be added. If he sells it, whoever buys it could also do this. And this is just a few things that could be added. A baseball hitting range, a hosiery knitting mill, a campground with special permission, drag strips, racetracks, indoor/outdoor firing ranges. And the worst possible thing for our community could also be added if someone bought it, is a liquor store or a drinking establishment. And we do not, I've provided you with 43, 42 or 43 names of people who have signed this petition that do not want this changed. We want to keep our community residential as much as possible and do not want any extra traffic that business is going to bring in, or the hazard of this sign could possibly cause even more accidents. And we are pleading with you not to do, approve this rezoning. I know at the meeting we had with the zoning commission, he stated that he had no intentions of doing any of these changes. He stated that he would turn the lights of the sign down or even turn it off at night. But there is nothing, if you change this, nothing that prevents him or that will say you cannot do this or tells him he has to do that. He can do whatever he wants to with that sign once you change this rezoning. Any questions? I would like to add one more thing. He put this sign up without getting a permit, tried to circumvent, he didn't, he didn't, could not turn it on until he got a complaint from the zoning board telling him that he was in violation. And he, that's the reason we are here, because the sign is already up without a permit. And I don't trust him. I'm sorry. And I, I'm sorry?
Shouldn't have moved in beside me.
You weren't there when I moved.
Yeah.
Okay, folks, folks.
You got the property in 2017.
Folks, ma'am, we will gladly have, have both of you removed.
Okay, I understand.
If you can't act like adults.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nope.
And I understand, and I very much understand the emotion involved for both, you know, for both sides. Any questions for? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. If you would, when you get to the podium, just state your name. Yes, ma'am.
I live.
Oh, and address, I'm sorry.
I live at the 6832, and I'm Lisa Bentley. And I'm going to add, I'm family too. I've lived there all my life on Highway 16. And I know this sign was going to cause trouble. And I know he says he's not going to sell, he's not going to do this, but we didn't think the other people would sell either. And he got what he got. So we don't know what's going to happen. He don't know. He could die. And all this stuff would be left for anybody to do anything they wanted to in that land. Like I say, most of us have lived on that road all of our lives. It's like, say, it's been all my family's land. We don't need it. He don't need it. He's got Facebook. He's got the paper. He can do anything. There's thousands of people over there all the time. He don't need extra advertisement. I've done had somebody run in my yard on that road, come within 50 feet of my living room window. And that's without the sign. I just, I just don't, I don't understand why he needs it. He don't, the rezoning thing is the biggie. If he, you rezone it, it opens it up to so much stuff. There's three children that live right behind his store. There's my grandchildren that lives across the road. There's grand, there's children everywhere on that road. And I hear them shooting all the time up there from my house. And I don't know if that's legal or not. It's boom, boom, boom. I don't know what they're doing. So what's to say, once you rezone it, what's he going to do? He says he's not going to do anything. But you know how that goes. Once it's in his hands and it's changed over, anything's possible. I just thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Sir?
The statement was made during this hearing that the sign was placed up prior to him getting a permit.
Correct.
Has it been operated without a permit?
No. But it is, it has been erected, not operated.
Has it been what, sir?
Elected, not operated.
Okay.
So there's concrete and the, you know, all that kind of stuff, but it hasn't been energized.
Okay. And the only complaints that you have gotten is from the neighbors in the neighborhood and no other complaints from anyone else?
Correct.
Okay.
Brian, I also have a question for you. If this was approved here, if a vote's called and approved, the Board of Commissioners have the ability to put conditions, correct? Or not?
Not on this. It's, it's a, it's a base rezoning. It's just from one to the other.
Okay.
If the applicant had applied for like a conditional rezoning or a text amendment or something like that, you'd have a little bit more, but just for rezoning, no. It's just one way or the other.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Burgess, one, one question I had. When you first, when you first came up, you, I think I heard you say that there was some confusion or some, there was some misunderstanding or confusion as to what was allowed?
Yeah.
Can you elaborate?
I can. So roughly last summer, our office got a phone call from Shannon, I believe it was, and said, you know, hey, we'd like to put up an electronic sign. We explained that neighborhood business doesn't allow those. That really, the only two ways forward is to either petition for a text amendment or rezoning. Some, some time passed between that phone call and when it went up. However, that's the way I take to work every day. That's how I come up. So when I saw the sign, we sent a violation letter that day saying, hey, it was issued without a permit and all, so it's not allowed there. That's where, that's where this petition came from.
If not, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. The public hearing is now closed. What is the pleasure of the board?
Do have one other question for you. Move forward. This, this is following the comprehensive plan for the county?
Correct. The current comprehensive plan does call for that corridor to be commercial. This is not the comprehensive plan that you guys will be voting on hopefully in like 10 minutes or so, but it is the one that is active during the application.
I understand.
Does, well, along those lines, does the new comprehensive plan also include this corridor to be commercial?
I think that there is a community service area. So the new comprehensive plan goes into a little bit more detail about what's what. Small-scale commercial, I think, is nearby. I don't think it's the specific area, but it's the area that you described where the gas station and precision is. Community service areas are very similar to what Ms. Price described for the neighborhood business. It's mostly residential, but should be some businesses that serve that kind of overall area. Nothing like a Walmart or anything like that for sure. So, but that's, that's the mile north. This area, to the best of my recollection, is residential through here.
Well, I would make one just informational statement as well. I mean, this is, I'm a numbers guy. And I actually just pulled up, just for fun, traffic count. Bless you folks that live on Highway 16 right there because there are 11,000 cars a day. The only thing I would say is that's not going to get better regardless. And I'm just saying as a general statement, you know, traffic counts are going up everywhere. And I would imagine that's probably about the third highest area in Alexander County behind the 127 Bridge in Bethlehem and Highway 16 at Walmart in Taylorsville, being the, I'm guessing that part because I'm not absolutely sure, but I would, but so, and I just, and I just say that as, as with that many cars, with that many cars a day and as distract, you know, with the way people text and everything else.
I checked the DOT today. The number for 2021 is 12,000.
Okay. And I'm not sure what the.
If it matters to you. I've had a sign for 29 years.
If it matters to you, I've had a sign for twenty-nine years.
Right.
There's still-
Oh, right. All right, um. Please pleasure the board.
I will make a motion for calling on a vote for the approval of the rezoning of sixty-seven forty-one NC Highway sixteen south as presented here tonight.
We have a motion, we have a motion to vote for approval, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, is there any additional discussion, gentlemen? I will, I'll say, if not, we, I'll say we will vote, and just to make sure everyone understands, we are voting, if you vote yea or for, that is to approve the rezoning, if you vote nay or against, it is to not approve.
We'll make one comment here before we vote. These type signs are going in in multiple counties, different establishments, uh, whether it be businesses, churches, you name it. We have one that went in down at Millersville, right down the road on sixteen, and that probably, in my opinion, and I've not checked with DOT, but in my opinion, that's probably one of the worst areas, I would think, uh, for traffic accidents in the county. Over the years, it seems like that's where I hear of a lot to, to occur. I think it'd be really nice if they actually redid that whole area right there at some point, um, maybe turn off lanes, things of that nature, but the grade of land, then you got streams, it's, it would be extremely expensive. But I do think that you are going to start seeing this throughout the area, multiple areas throughout. One thing personally that I don't like is the way this was went about, I will say that. We have, uh, these things in place for a reason, and they should be followed. The other thing is, I do, I do agree with, uh, erecting the sign up so that it does help with pulling in or out of the establishment, so people can see, so I do agree with that part. And I don't assume, I assume that no one did check with DOT to find if there was a, just an absolute uptick in accidents where a litted sign would be. That's all I have.
Ms. Chairman, you gonna make one comment?
Yes, sir.
I'll, I'll second what Mr. Pendle said, that's the thing that bothers me, uh, if the sign hadn't already been erected, and, uh, it would've come to us to, uh, went highway commercial, it wouldn't have been a, been a question what we would've done. And I, I've fought as hard as anybody in here trying to lower taxes for the taxpayers in this county. And more businesses, the only way we're gonna get it, more revenue. So, uh, I just don't like kinda how it's come to us, or there would've been no question probably what, how this would've been handled, so, uh, but the county, if we're gonna keep growing, is gonna have more business, and there's gonna be more highway commercial land in this county. If not, the taxpayers are gonna suffer, cause they're gonna have to pay more taxes. So I hope his, I know the neighbors down there probably don't like it, but I hope his business doubles so we can get some more tax revenue, and that's gonna save everybody in this county. Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, um, at this time, our vote will be to approve the rezoning of, rezoning case twenty-four dash zero one. All right, Jim, let's, let's vote. All in favor of the rezoning to highway commercial, please raise your right hand. Opposed? Passes three to one. And all I would say is we, we have to look at big picture, we have to look at down the road, um, I'm not a fan of how it was going about either. But I also understand, I also understand only small business.
Yeah, all I think I'm gonna say, Ms. Chairman, is the fact that I like the new zoning program better than this because of the type of neighborhood that it is, that's the only problem I have is because of the type of neighborhood. I understand about the signs, don't have a problem with the signs, but at the same time, based on the neighborhood and, and where it's located, that's why, uh, I said no, uh, because I think the little neighborhood stores and things like that in that little neighborhood is much better, and, I mean, I like guns, I think they got some neat guns down there and everything, but I'm just saying, based on the neighborhood itself, that's all my reason for voting no.
Thank you, Ms. Peter. All right. Um, we will move on to number eight. Public hearing approval of twenty forty-five comprehensive plan, review of draft land development code, which are actually two separate items. Gentlemen, we will be looking at taking action on the approval of the twenty, twenty forty-five comprehensive plan. The draft land development code will be a review only. Mr. Burgess?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Uh, a, as, as Chairman Lael pointed out, so we will be voting on the comp plan, just talking about land development code, um, a snuggle man is, is one item, because they kinda go together, and also, so you guys felt like you were getting out of here sooner than you actually are. So the comprehensive plan, you guys heard a, a quick sort of overview of that, hopefully you guys read every single word over the last month, I'm, I believe that every single one of you did that. But generally speaking, there is, there's a process by state law, uh, that requires us to do this like any other kinda legislative change. Comprehensive plan, with the presentation, you guys are now gonna open up a public hearing, hopefully, uh, let folks to comment on the, uh, the plan if they've read it, and then decide on whether or not you would like to adopt it. So I think the next slide, one more. Yeah, so last month, we had that end-up, uh, conversation, and tonight, we're gonna talk about what, uh, one person on Facebook called a steaming pile of good ideas, and good was in quotations, it's my favorite thing that's happened since I've been here. So we have to hold the public hearing, you guys get to have a discussion about this, and then eventually you'll vote on the comprehensive plan adoption. I will sit down and shut up and then come back and lecture about the land development code once that's done.
Gentlemen, I make a motion that we open a public hearing pertaining to, um, approval of the twenty forty-five comprehensive plan.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. In discussion, if not, all in favor, raise your right hand. We are now in, in public, public session, uh, for public comment. Crickets. Well, first thing I'll say is I was involved with the comprehensive plan, um, the two board members that were involved were myself and Commissioner Pendle. I think, well, I think the, I think the idea of a comprehensive plan is very, is, is very smart, um, because it allows, allows the county to look down the road, um, not literally, even though we're talking about, maybe talking about some roads, but, you know, but it does allow us to look into the future. It allows the people of the county to provide their input as to what they would like to see, what's important to them. I know, I think most of you that are here already know that, you know, surveys went out, um, we had, we had decent response, obviously, um, you know, we wish there was a way that every single citizen could've made, you know, could've had input, but there's absolutely no way to make that happen. And a lot of the findings, personally, I was not surprised by a lot of, a lot of the findings and a lot of the things that went into this. Um, I would say that's partially due to the fact that I'm in the real estate and construction business for my day job. And I've lived in Alexander County my entire life, except for when I was away in college. And I have a pretty, I feel like I have a pretty good understanding of the folks that live here, um, you know, being one of them, just like, you know, these other gentlemen. That being said, is anyone, anyone out there, um, Commissioners and/or folks in the audience, anybody interested in stepping to the podium and stating your name? If not, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
We have a motion, we have a motion in a second, in discussion. If not, all in favor of closing the public hearing, please raise your right hand. Unanimous? Ms., I say, um, board, I would make a motion that we approve the twenty forty-five comprehensive plan as written.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, please raise your right hand. Passes unanimously. Uh, Ms. Burgess, is there anything additional you'd like to?
Thank you guys for your support, I appreciate it. Both you and Marty, serving on the steering committee, but also for you guys supporting the work that my department does, genuinely does mean a lot, so. Uh, I can move on to the land development code if you guys are ready.
That'd be great.
So similar to what I did, uh, last month, I'm just gonna give you this, this crash course, this is available on the website now, uh, if you go to the planning and development page, look at land development code, uh, there's a draft, and there's also on our GIS website, a copy of the proposed new zoning map, uh, it, it'll say proposed zoning, and there's two proposed corridor overlays for downtown as well as business corridors, so those are available on there on our GIS. So land development code is made up of fifteen articles, however, Chad, can you, yeah, two of them are Ben's problem, and three of them you guys have already handled, so we're not gonna go over those tonight, just so you can, uh, stay awake. Next one, Chad, there we go. So this is that future land use map, and I'm gonna see if I was right about what I told you guys about ten minutes ago. Yep, this is, that's the CSA, that blue dot is the CSA area, and down on the bottom side of the county, um, that tan is residential and the blue is CSA, so. The future land use map is in the comprehensive plan that you guys just adopted, uh, it broadly, not parcel-specific, but just sort of broad swaths, um, makes an effort to, to anticipate as well as encourage certain land uses, um, in different parts of the county. I'm extremely proud of this, this is probably the first time I've seen this happen, and there's a reason for it, that I won't bore you with, but if you go to the next slide, Chad, you'll see, it looks really similar to the future land use map, um, which is exciting, planners don't get to do this a lot of the time, it's, it's one of those like, it's like an eclipse, you only get to see it ever so often. So this new, uh, zoning map, you'll see there's some blue things, those are office and institutional, um, that's gonna be largely government, churches, schools, nonprofits, that kinda thing. The, the bright, or I should say, deep yellow is higher density residential, you're gonna find those in Stony Point, Bethlehem, Taylorsville, and at night, cause that's where we have water and sewer. That sort of tan, it's kinda hard to see on the screen like usual, but that sort of tan is, uh, medium density residential, and then the, the white-ish yellow is low density residential, and that's gonna be the areas where we have, uh, mostly hills, farmland, uh, and environmental factors that would sort of slow things down. Next slide, okay. So yeah, it's up on the county GIS now, it should better reflect current land uses, uh, right now, we've got an issue where things are zoned, something in the actual land use is completely irrelevant to that. I wanna take, thank the, uh, tax department, they shared their Excel spreadsheet of land uses with me, I was able to use that to actually do this rezoning, so it should sync up pretty much everywhere now. And it's density-based zoning, we're gonna go over what that means here in a minute, but I, I think that's an accomplishment for us. It establishes overlay districts for sixteen south, one twenty-seven and downtown, so one twenty-seven, where there's already commercial, uh, sixteen south, where there's already commercial, as well as the downtown, gets sort of different standards, those are things that we talked about in the comprehensive plan, sort of saying, you know, those are our, our primary places for business, and we should probably spend a little bit of extra time making sure that those reflect what our community wants them to look like. It also has a, what I hope is a simplified table of permitted uses, the one we have right now is Greek, as far as I'm concerned, uh, and it goes from, uh, using special use permits as, as generously as our current zoning ordinance, to doing something called supplemental requirements. One of the things that, uh, we've noticed, is Anthony here tonight? This is a lot of based off of his work in Henderson County, I, he, I don't know if he knows this, I worked right after he left with Autumn Radcliffe, someone that worked with him, uh, and, and those two wrote an incredible land development code that I still kinda hold up as the, the gold standard, so, um, i- if there's any really hard questions, please direct them to Anthony. So, but, uh, the supplemental requirements, I think, is a really elegant solution to what we typically get with special use permits. So let's say, for example, you've got a campground that you wanna, you know, uh, someone's coming in before you guys, you're gonna get the same thing, hey, what are you doing with your solid waste, how far, you know, what's the, how far is it gonna be from any other residential, can you plant a buffer around it, are you gonna be up late at night, you know, that kinda stuff? We just put those into the requirements, with the supplemental requirements, and say, every campground's already gonna have to do those things anyway. We know from multiple hearings that that's what's gonna come up, so let's go ahead and put them in. Now, there are still some special use permits, um, for, for example, if you're, if you're trying to do a campground in a sort of high-density residential neighborhood, it's kinda hard to pull that off, as opposed to doing it somewhere like, you know, where we've got Rocky Face, where it's a lot lower density, but, so there's still special use permits, but we, we trim those down by putting in those requirements anyway. All right, next slide. So this is what density-based zoning is like, I've, I've gotten this question a lot, you guys may understand this already, I probably explained it to half of you, but for posterity's sake, uh, humor me. So this is an actual lot that I found on Mountain Creek that was, uh, a really easy shape to, uh, put colors on. It's fifteen acres, right now, under our current zoning ordinance, you need about twenty thousand square feet per lot, which could equal thirty units per acre. Chad, can I get the next slide? However, if you see those contour lines, it's, you can develop it, but you're gonna pay a lot more for it, it's gonna be a pain, and honestly, it's probably an environmentally sensitive area you may wanna leave alone anyway, because of the fact that it's got, you know, a, a fairly steep drop-off there. The front side, fairly flat, it seems pretty developable. So in reality, even though you've got that fifteen acres, you have about seven and a half usable acres, which means that you're only gonna get fifteen units out of that lot anyway. By all means. So Chad, can I get the next slide? What density-based zoning does is it, it takes the parcel as a whole, looks at what density you would allow there, but allows the development to take place wherever it makes sense on the parcel. So in this situation, that back green area could be reserved as open space, and we would only still allow those thirty units, because that's what we would've allowed into the current zoning ordinance, but those thirty units can be placed on the part of the land that can actually be developed on. So you're kinda getting a win-win, you get more housing, which we all, I think, agree, we need housing, uh, for folks, and we need housing that's reasonably affordable, uh, for a lot of our workforce here, um, but at the same time, you've got open space that you're not getting rid of in the process. I, I really like that, that approach. So, I, I really like that, that approach, and that's why I've gone with that here. All right, next slide. All right, Public Facilities is one of the chapters. It goes over traffic, emergency services, access management, property addressing, we're going to talk about those a little bit, but some of the example regulations is, if you've got a, a development that's going to potentially generate over 1,000 trips per day, I'm going to require you to bring me a traffic impact assessment from an engineer that assures me that our facilities can handle that, or recommends what we need to do about it if they can't. Most of the time, it's like a D cell lane, or, you know, left end turning lane, or something like that, and it's pretty standard i- in most places to do something like that now for large enough projects. Also, we need to confirm that fire and EMS can service that new development. We need to make sure that they're able to, to get out there and take care of that, and so, we have, we already have this, but based off the subdivision chapter you guys adopted, but the Technical Review Committee, where Jeff, and, and Mark, and a lot of other folks at the county sit in with me on development review and make sure that we're not sort of putting people into a bad situation, and that'll continue under this. And then it'll finally answer the question, how do I get an address? It's probably the question I get, well, second, second most frequent question I get. So, this actually lays it out for folks in the property addressing section. Can I get the next slide? So, this is what access management means. I don't mean to pick on Taylorsville Hill here, but this is, I have dreams about this intersection. Access management is basically trying to cut down where conflict points are and where curb cuts are. So, this is an example, if you got like a little diamond thing, that means the curb cuts are too close to each other. You've got two people who could be pulling out at the same time, or blocking each other's view. The arrows are pointing at conflicting with the intersection, so you don't want curb cuts too close to an intersection either, because again, you may get a green light that someone didn't pay attention to, they pull out of, you know, let's say, Taco Bell, or something like that, someone's got a green light, they didn't see it, that creates a conflict point, you could potentially have an accident. And you also want intersections aligned, because again, you can see each other, and it helps create an orderly path. Under access management, if someone were to come in and say, I'm going to redevelop the, I don't know, the Giovanni's Gas Station parking lot, I can ask them and say, hey, can we work on moving this closer to the intersections across the way from you? Can we change where this curb cut is when you're, you're already going to be doing this work? Can we correct this? That gives me the authority to kind of, let's, let's start cleaning some of this up. All right, next slide. That's the goal. This is what good access management, I think I stole this from Department of Transportation out of Wisconsin, they had a really good thing, but basically, what you want is, you, you've got one primary road going into places, you don't have a ton of curb cuts in it, you mostly handle those things internal to the shopping area, or to the, the neighborhood, or something like that. It really, it pulls people off of the main road and lets traffic get out of the way and handle itself elsewhere, so that's, that's ultimately what you're looking for with good access management. Landscaping, I don't know if you guys have ever dealt with this, because I think I'm probably the only person who doesn't drive a pickup truck on, in, in my department, but I drive a little Prius, because it's cheap, and I cannot see over the bushes that people plant right next to the road. This says, hey, you've got to have a side train, you've got to pull those things back, because they cause crashes. And it also requires plantings in, in places that we don't now, but it also clarifies when and why we do, so like interior parking things for shopping areas, that kind of stuff, and what the point of those are, and what we expect from it, because right now, our landscaping ordinance is, it's basically tea leaves, you just kind of figure out what, what you think they meant at the time, so. Also, general standards, I am in favor of us doing what we are, what we, I did a text amendment about this, but continuing the 90-degree cutoff for lighting. Basically, if you have lights pointing at the sky, it causes light pollution, you can't see beautiful stars, you can't see a lot of other nice things about Alexander County, because it's, it's just streetlights everywhere, so any new commercial development, basically, point your lights at your property and down, please, that's, that's what we're asking. Not, not that this is relevant to what we just talked about, but it, it calms down some of the, the LED and LCD sign standards. It's not to say that they're not allowed, but we're a little bit more strict on what's actually distracting, like flashing lights, or changing really fast, or animations, or anything like that. And permits required, except when they're not, because we've got exemptions for churches and schools, so, and we get a lot of those, so, all right. There's a Natural Resources section, most of this is out of our control, it's state and federal requirements, that's going to be flood plain, water quality, streams, soil and erosion control, that kind of stuff, but it does explain it, because one of my goals with this Land Development Code is putting everything into one document, so that if, let's say, Josh, you want to develop something, you should be able to get this one binder and find every answer to your questions there, instead of clicking like 16 different links and five different websites and that kind of thing, so. Decision-making and review processes, this is straightforward, who makes those decisions and how are they made? So, it explains, what does the Board of Commissioners vote on when it comes to land use? What does the Planning Board? What does the Board of Adjustment? What does Brian decide on? And how are those decisions supposed to be made? So, in this situation, legislative decisions, you guys, you know, sort of get to listen to folks and make a judgment call, but if this were a special use permit, you would have, as you guys remember, a quasi-judicial process that you have to follow that has a much higher standard. So, it explains that, whenever you're doing a certain kind of permit, it, it walks you through that process of who and how that decision can be made. Enforcement violations, appeals, non-conformities, and definitions, this is just a, a lot of stuff that makes my job easier, but I don't know that you guys will be terribly concerned with it. So, and the non-conformities, how do we handle things that don't quite fit? You guys all know that we get situations where we just couldn't have predicted a, a particular development pattern, or, or topo, or something like that, so this gives us guidance on how we're going to handle those. How do we, folks who, handle folks who don't quite follow the rules? Again, through the process of sending a letter for violation, all that kind of stuff. And then also, how do we determine the difference between an arterial road and a thoroughfare? There's actually a definition in there now that says, it's, it's this kind of speed limit, this kind of traffic count, that, you know, this is what this road should look like, because those will be, and that's one of the things that I, I didn't mention in the zoning section, but the new setbacks will be based off of what kind of road you front on, because I think that if you're on, you know, right now, RA 20, it's 40, 40, 15, it's 40 in front, 40 in the rear, 15 on the side, but if you're on, you know, Joe Bob Road out in the middle of nowhere, and it's gravel, having a 40-foot setback makes a little bit less sense than if you're on 127. Those, those are different traffic patterns, and so, the setbacks sort of move based off what kind of road they're on. If I'm going to make that judgment call, I need a definition to tell people, here's why your road is considered an arterial road, or, or whatever, so. All right, so next month, Planning Board's going to be looking at this to vote on Thursday night, hopefully with a positive recommendation, and next month, I should have a public hearing ready for you guys to have on this as well. Like I said, it's up on the website, if you guys want to go through it, call me with any questions, ask any questions you have right now, and then hopefully, by the time we leave that meeting, we will have a shiny new Land Development Code, all thanks to Anthony, so.
Ms. Burgess, would you just kind of humor me? Basically, we're going to, you know, well, if, if this is approved, we are going to be going, moving to a larger number of zoning districts.
Yes.
And I was just kind of, I was just going to ask you if you could, and I know, and I know there's no apples to apples.
Yep.
Because it's, that's the point. But what are, so, in the residential breakdowns, there's R1, R2, R3.
And R2R.
And R2R. R1 being the most dense.
Yep.
R2 being slightly less dense. R3 being.
Low.
Low density, and then R2R, which is quote-unquote, the, the second R for rural.
Yeah, it's, the R is for rural. It's, it's very similar in terms of density to R2. The reason the R is in there is because it has different uses on the table of permitted uses.
Okay.
So, medium density's going to happen anywhere in the county, but rural parts of the county are going to not necessarily support the same uses that more suburban, or even, I understand this is a strong word for Alexander County, but closer to urban type things. The, the, doesn't make sense to completely patch them together.
And then, as you move to, we, we will, or we are looking at, yeah, there's R3. Basically, then we have OI, which is office.
Institutional.
Institutional, which is, can you just give us a?
Yeah.
Brief synopsis of, I mean, I'll just, yeah, just kind of what, what each one is?
Those are going to be your non-residential uses that are still fairly non-disruptive, so again, churches, maybe a school, nonprofits, government buildings. You're not going to have music blaring on a Saturday night, you're not necessarily going to have high traffic counts to it, it's going to be steady, low-intensity type pattern.
Okay. And then, mixed use, which obviously would be a mixture of residential and commercial, which is pretty self-explanatory. Community commercial, or CC, which I would assume is neighborhood business.
Similar, yeah.
Similar?
The, the mixed-use CC and the next one, regional commercial, are all supposed to scale up, so mixed use allows for those really small-scale, you know, corner shop-type things. Community commercials, you know, you may, you may have like a small-scale, like a Dollar General, or, you know, something like that, but it's a little bit higher than just community shop. And then your regional commercials, Walmarts, that kind of thing, so.
All right. And then obviously, you know, industrial, which, oh, one thing that I did notice, though, that I wanted to ask you about, waterfront residential. And this obviously is designed, to some degree, to protect.
Yep.
The, you know, waterfrontage on Lake Hickory and Lake Lookout.
Mm-hmm.
Primarily, or?
It's the one exception to the density rule as well, it does still require minimum lot sizes.
Right.
A general idea, that being is, basically, if those remain larger, I mean, they're still half-acre, but if they remain larger lots, there's less grading going on and less sedimentation going into our water supply.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions? Ms. Burgess, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will, we will review this information and look to act on it. I'll say, probably most likely at our next monthly meeting, which will be in May.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, number nine, is the Annual Community Child Protection, Child Fatality Prevention Team Presentation. I would recognize Billy Walker, Health Director, and Dory Malba, who is the Director of Nursing.
Good evening. We are here to present the Annual Community Child Protection Team, Fatality Child Protection Team, and Child Fatality Protection, Prevention Team, which we shortened, and we call it CCPT and CFPT. Next slide. The purpose of the North Carolina Child Prevention System is to develop a community-wide approach to child abuse and neglect, to understand the causes of childhood deaths, to identify the gaps and deficiencies in service delivery, and to make improvement recommendations for laws, rules, policies, and to prevent future child abuse, neglect, and death. It's set up two ways, and the first one is Community Child Protection Team, and this falls under DSS, and it's, it's a review selected active cases of children being served by CPS, which is Child Protective Services, and they review cases in which the, a child has died as a result of suspected child abuse and neglect, and a report of child abuse and neglect was made about, of the child or family within the prior 12 months, or the child or family was a recipient of CPS within the prior 12 months. And they actually do a report to the state. We don't oversee that. They do that report, and they turn that in. Then our side, which is the next slide, go back one. Our side is the Child Fatality Prevention Team. So then, we review all the records of any additional child fatality. So then, we get together, we can, we combine those teams and review all the deaths, and we are actually always a year behind on those. So, tonight, our report will be for the 2022 deaths. So, what are your roles as the Board, as the Health and Human Service Board and the Board of County Commissioners? So, it's to receive the annual report from the local CCPT and the CFPT, which is what tonight is, and then advocate for the system improvements and needed resources if requested, and then appoint members to the local CCPT and the CFPT as designated by the state statute Article 147B-1406. And I'm going to let Dory do the report that, that we did as the, as the team.
In 2022, we had three deaths that we reviewed. They were all white, non-Hispanic, all male. One was a three-year-old, and two were 14-year-olds. Causes of death were congenital heart disease, an ATV accident, and then intentional self-harm by handgun. So, as far as the congenital heart disease goes, we didn't really find a system problem because it was related to a problem from birth. With the ATV accident, despite receiving community education on ATV safety, ATVs continue to place children and adolescents in unsafe situations. And the handgun accident, self-inflicted gunshot wound, despite community education on gun safety, guns continue to place children and adolescents in unsafe situations. We don't have any recommendations related to the congenital heart disease death, but we did recommend, and we did have a member of the Safe Kids Coalition at our meeting, using some of the, some of their action plan, implementing some of their action plan. One of the goals being to increase community awareness regarding ATV, UTV, recreational off-highway vehicle, safety for children zero to 18 years, and then also their goal to increase community awareness regarding firearm safety for children ages zero to 18.
Can I, can I interrupt just a second? Two of the three of these could have been prevented by parents, if they acted as I mean, I, you know, ATV, I think they all say 16 and over, period. I may, you know, I may be wrong, you know, I mean, I know they make little bitty ones, because, you know, and I remember doing silly stuff on them, too. But, and then, handgun, you know, guns are not that hard to keep securely away from And I didn't mean to interrupt, but I, you know, I'm just, I mean, adults need to act like adults, and I'm saying that, you know, I'm saying that to myself, too, as a parent, but grief, I mean, it's sad that we're talking about two-thirds of the, of the children that died in Alexander County in 2022, you know, could very likely, you know, have been But, anyway, please, please proceed.
The 2023 Local Childhood Fatality Activity Report was sent to you via email, and we need approval for both that report and for our summary tonight. During the last meeting of the CFPT/CCPT Committee, Billy and I, there's been some turnover on the team, and trying to keep the team going, having people show up is difficult sometimes, so we kind of reviewed, or oriented people about their role as a member, which the main thing is showing up for the meetings. The required reports have been submitted to the state CFPT Coordinator, and the Safe Kid Coalition Team Member, who was at the table, is, I think, going to serve on our committee moving forward to help us reach some of the goals and recommendations.
And one- And one big thing is that the state has new legislation passing, and so there's going to be changes to the CFPT rules, but we're not sure if those are going to go into effect in January of 2025 or July of 2025 because they're still debating. DHHS, DHHS has not decided how they're going to go with what we're, what we're supposed to do as far as our changes. But as soon as that comes down the pike, and it's going to be on how many times we meet and how the teams are aligned and stuff like that. So whenever we get how we're supposed to meet, then we will bring that to the board and get your approval for that as well. So we just need approval tonight for, for this presentation and for what we submitted to the state.
You guys ready for that? Gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We approve both presentations as presented.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any question or discussion? If not, all in favor of approval, please raise your right hand. Motion passes unanimously.
The last slide I did include a thank you from all the members. It is hard to get them all there, but we all do take it very seriously. You know, it is something very important, reviewing all these deaths and trying to, you know, come together and review everything that happened to see is there anything that could have been done different? Is there changes that need to be made to prevent something from happening again? So we do appreciate your time letting us come and talk about our work and our successes. So we appreciate it.
Billy, one question on the summary. On the second page, you know, there's a list of who's supposed to be on the, or who the committee is supposed to be made up of.
Uh-huh.
And do you still have this, I mean, the same vacancies now that?
Some, yes. We actually, at the last meeting, had some volunteers, thanks to some members who were on the committee. He volunteered some of his people, so we actually do have some of the vacancies filled. But we do still have some vacancies, yes.
Well, I would, I mean, I would hope that if the county or whomever could help you guys with filling those vacancies, I see a couple, you know, elected positions on this And if those are vacant, we'll help try to persuade.
Yeah.
Because I feel like this is, you know, obviously preventing children from dying is a pretty important thing.
Yeah. We actually even mentioned feeding lunch because it may help them to come because we do it right after lunch, but, you know, that's hard too for people to work in their schedule. So we thought maybe if we fed them during lunch, they could combine that. So we, we've looked at different ways to try to, to help it work out for everybody because it is important.
Right. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Moving right along, number 10, budget ordinance amendments, number 21, numbers 21 through 23. I would recognize, I would recognize Shane Fox, county manager.
Thank you, board, for allowing me to present tonight. We have three budget amendments for proposal for your vote. Number 21, 22, and 23. 21 and 22 are annual budget ordinance adjustments. The first is the transfer of our emergency management grant line items to the 911 communication due to a recent reorganization of department functions. Again, this will result in a net increase of $0 in the expenditure fund. This is simply moving from one department to another due to some more, most recent changes within those two departments and moving of those services. 22 is the longer of the three. It is four separate entries. The first two are increases in budget with DSS and Health due to grant money coming in. The first is DSS increases due to crisis intervention program funding provided by the state to further assist county residents in crisis. Second's increase the Health Department budget for purchase of Narcan vending machine for SUD slash Port Group with grant funding from Blue Cross Blue Shields. The third is to reclassify the management administration allocation to the appropriate general fund line item for water and sewer. And since we are allowed to charge from our water and sewer fund back to our general fund for central administration costs, that's what it's doing, is moving it from the water and sewer fund to the general fund for costs incurred through the general fund on behalf of the water and sewer fund. And then lastly is to return $1,566 remaining cash of local funds from the closeout of the soil and water state emergency disaster stream debris removal project. And then 23 is that project ordinance removing or moving that same money back. This is the money left over after our stream removal grants from 2023. There was $1,556 that will be returned back to the general fund. That is 21, 22, and 23. So any questions you might have, I'd be glad to answer. We'll state, as I always do, of the 21, 22, and 23, we're at 57 at this time last year and 88 amendments the year before. So we are considerable, considerably better, and I think that is a testament to the work that's been going on within our finance department, and I'm grateful for their work as always.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve budget order 21, 22, and 23 as presented.
Do I have a second? Second. A discussion, not all in favor of approval of budget ordinance amendments 21 through 23, please raise your right hand. Passage unanimously.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, next on the agenda is the consent agenda. That information, that information has been provided, and if you would remember, there is, there was one addition to the consent agenda being item L, which is the Alexander County Hero Rescue Contract with Vash-Tai Fire and Rescue Incorporated. Do I have a, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second? All in favor? Right hand? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, item number 12, county manager's report. I would recognize county manager Shane Fox.
Thank you again. Got a few updates here on projects I'd like to go through, and then just some general updates, some things coming up, along with some thank yous. Many projects going on within the county. I know several of you are aware of some of the projects that are close to you, like the Bethlehem Park project, so that is well underway. Work is continuing to be done, so we've had the removal of the old building bathrooms, concession stands, et cetera. Dirt is being brought in to level out that area for the new facility. Lights and poles have been removed, and wiring and electrical work is underway for the new poles and new lighting. So again, that project's well underway. We're in the beginning stages of it, but it's good to see progress going on. Bethlehem Water Tank Project, that property, again, has been purchased or is under contract off of the Rink Down Road. Our geotechnical work is completed this week, and we just received that report today. So once we're able to review that report, we should be able to move forward, hopefully with finalization of the purchase of that property, again, off Rink Down Road, which will eventually lead to us moving forward with the bidding process for the tank construction itself. So good to have the geotechnical work back, and as of right now, we're in the process of reviewing that and allowing our engineer to review that. Once that's complete, like I said, we'll then move forward with closing of the property and then bidding, or advertising for bidding for the construction of the tank in Bethlehem, Bethlehem Water Tank. The Health Canopy is only just a couple of weeks, I would say, two or three weeks out probably from completion is fair. So that work started just a number of weeks ago, and we're up against a tight deadline there because of grant funding. Looks like we want to make it, which is good. So if you've been by there, the poles are up, just waiting on, I think, some concrete to dry and the canopy to be installed. But again, we're just a few weeks away from that project being complete. Fire training facility is that close. We're in need of gravel and the road being put in, but the facility is complete. It's been painted. If you've been by there in the last few days, it's painted gray, so we now are awaiting the road to be cut in and gravel to be placed in that area, and that fire training facility should, should be ready for opening. Bowman Court Project, we had brought to you last month and asked for you to move back to rebidding that project. That's back out for bid. Our pre-bid conference is this week on the 10th, and we're expecting bid openings on April the 25th. So here in just a few weeks, hopefully, we'll be able to bring something to you at the May meeting for recommendation of bid approval for the Bowman Court Project. And our Sterling Road Project, we've talked about for a number of years. We did receive back a solicit bid for engineering services, which is good. So we are moving forward with that RFQ for engineering services for the Sterling Road Project. So that'll be our next phase, is approval of the engineering firm and then moving forward with the design and then bidding for a contract, contractor within that project. So our budget workshop is coming up. The finance staff has been working diligently, diligently the last couple of months on our 24, 25 budget. And we're excited about what we have in store there to be able to deliver to the public. Also want to say thank you, obviously, to Brian and the work that he's put into the comprehensive plan and land development code. I think it shows tonight, and we're very appreciative of that. And then thank you to our public safety folks. This weekend was unfortunately a tough weekend, kind of like last weekend. We had some negative outcomes with car accidents and law enforcement, et cetera. Fire departments, EMS is always very professional in the work they do to provide to our citizens and our stakeholders here, but back-to-back weekends of tough outcomes for those folks. And want to say thank you publicly to the work they do. It's difficult work. They seem to show up and do it without fault, and I'm appreciative of that as county manager and appreciative of the work that they put into it. So that concludes my updates for the night. Be glad to answer any questions you might have on the projects or anything else county-related.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is item 13, closed session. Per North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A, 45, and 6, we will be going into closed session for the, for discussion pertaining to economic development contractual obligations and personnel. We will reconvene in open session for the purpose of adjournment only. Thank you very much for being here and have a safe trip home.